All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the public hearing tonight. I have Kristin Scott from the Ad, if you'd like to step to the podium. Yes, thank you so much.
Am I on? Okay, sorry. Yes, my name is Kristin Scott. I am with the Ad. I am a community development specialist there. And some of the things that I do are help with the administration of these community development block grants. This application is for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Utility Assistance Program. On January 25th of 2021, Governor Beshear announced that there would be CDBG Coronavirus Response Funds available to local governments, cities, and counties in order to help Kentuckians with overdue utility bills within their jurisdictions. These applications can be up to 200,000. Households will be eligible if they are within the city limits, they have been financially impacted by COVID-19, they are struggling to pay their utility bills, and have actually received notice for disconnection between the dates of January 21st of 2020 and present day. Households will apply to Northern Kentucky Community Action Commission, and then if approved, the funds will go directly to the utility companies in their name. The City of Erlanger will be applying for 200,000 and will benefit the citizens of Erlanger. 190,000 will go to the City of Erlanger and 10,000 will go towards the administration of this grant. All CDBG and HUD guidelines will be followed and adhered to during the duration of this project, and no residents will be displaced by the program. I am open for any questions, if anybody has any.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Kristin. I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will reconvene with our special meeting at 7 o'clock.
All right, at 7 o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started with the special meeting. Mrs. Hoffman, can you please take role for us? Ms. Elmore? Here. Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Nicely?
Here.
Mr. Nipper? Ms. Reckers?
Here.
Ms. Jasper?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. The only item on the agenda tonight is legislation from the public hearing that we just had. Mr. Gatlin?
So, resolution of the City of Erlanger authorizing the mayor to sign and file a community development block coronavirus grant application, the amount of $200,000 to provide utility relief funding to residents. Resolution is just as it says, that the City of Erlanger hereby authorizes Mayor Jessica Fetti to sign and file a community development block grant application, the amount of $200,000 to provide utility relief to residents.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Mr. Meyer, Mrs. Nicely, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank the city staff for jumping on this so quickly. I know by the time that I had reached out and mentioned it to see if they were going to participate, that things are already in the works. I know that the need is great. I know, you know, the Community Action Commission and St. Vincent de Paul are just a few of the organizations that are helping with utilities and rent during this time. We see a number of individuals that are continuing, that potentially could pay their bills, but they're, you know, still waiting on the unemployment, sometimes as much as six months, that they've still been waiting on those things. So those lifelines have been stalled. So this money is very much needed, and I'm just thankful again to the city staff for working so diligently, getting this put together, I believe the first one in the county to do so.
Thank you, Gary. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn the special meeting? Mrs. Jasper and Mrs. Nicely, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn special meeting. All right, and we'll go ahead and call the special caucus meeting to order. Mrs. Hoffman, if you could take role as well, again, please.
Ms. Elmore?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Nicely?
Here.
Mr. Nipper? Ms. Reckers?
Here.
Ms. Jasper?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Our first item for discussion is the railroad property agreement for Public Works Facility. City Administrator Matt Kramer is going to give a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to just take a few minutes here tonight and discuss the reason that we've, the staff and Facility Study Task Force has recommended putting the Public Works Facility back on the property that it's currently at. I know I've talked to a handful of you that had concerns at the last meeting I wasn't able to attend, so I just wanted to kind of run through some of that and then answer any questions if anybody has any additional. Some of the reasons the staff had considered other properties and, again, decided this was the best course of action was just to not take future revenue away from other properties that we might purchase. So if we do purchase some industrial property like we've looked at, you know, that does limit that future revenue that would have been potential or current on that site. Two of the structures, two of the larger structures on the property have still long useful lives, the salt barn, and then we have another maintenance garage that is a block building, and it's fairly new. So both of those have long useful lives. Other improvements on the site that are already there, access road, dumpster area, parking lot, things like that, you know, we wouldn't have to recreate and spend additional money. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it, obviously, it all adds up when you're building. Of course, the saving the money on acquiring additional city property. Current location is centralized and, you know, for both sides of the city, when we, especially when we're talking to plow operations and salting where the salt is located. And again, the Facilities Task Force, you know, agreed with that recommendation in all their meetings. So just to kind of discuss, you know, currently, right now, as council approved last meeting, we have a 15-year lease, which is about 240,000 at the end of that lease, plus any COLA raises. If we look at a 30-year, you know, we're at about half a million for 30 years of being at that site. Just so everybody's aware, you know, every time we do a renewal, you know, I plan on asking for additional, you know, 15 lease to reset. I don't know if the railroad will go for that, but that would give us another buffer and with the understanding that, you know, we understand there is a slight risk here since we're leasing property. Just to talk about some of the properties that we did look at throughout the city, some of them, we didn't, we did some very preliminary negotiations with the owners and others, we just requested information on. So these are some of the properties we looked at, and we looked at a two-acre industrial lot. The value, PVA is about half a million. We're estimating, just because of the recent sale of the property, probably looking at about 700,000. Plus, we'd have to demo the buildings that are on it before we'd have to even think about doing construction. We did look at a little over an acre lot that did have office space, so the monthly rent for that was between 75 and 8,500. Site wouldn't fulfill the needs that we really needed. We would have to build additional stuff somewhere in the city or on that property. So between the cost and just the site itself, it didn't really pan out to make sense for us. We did look at the property on Houston Road that we own. Again, that's some pretty valuable property down there. We've had a couple businesses, even in the last year, want to move there or expand there. So we just don't think that's a good place to put a public works building on such, you know, prime property. We did look, and we actually did some initial drawings back in 2017, an attachment to the East Station. After looking at it and doing some of the drawings, it wouldn't fill the needs that were even needed anyway. We would still have to have both properties, so it wasn't very feasible. The property out there was limited by terrain. The overhead wires that are right behind the East Station, you know, really limited our ability to build out there. And additionally, it would take over the glades of Erlanger Park. So it's just other things that we have looked at, and we just didn't think was a, would have been a good move. The other thing, we did look at a little over two-acre lot, a residential lot that was in the Turkey Foot area. And with it being right next to other houses, just again, we could put there if we wanted to, we just didn't think that was a good place for a public works building when you have residents right next door to the facility. So the reason I bring this up is that, you know, we have done a lot of research. We have looked at different locations before this recommendation. I just didn't want, you know, the council to think that we didn't look at other options. So that's where I'm at. If anybody has any questions that they'd like to ask further about the property, because we would like to continue with the budget amendment that was approved a few months ago to continue with construction drawings. Okay?
Yeah, I guess just a couple of questions. One, on the additional construction option, would that be additional construction at that location? Or is there no room to build there?
Really, there isn't room to build there. I mean, we would have to probably keep the property, you know, we don't have the salt barn. They wouldn't have maintenance bays at that property. It was mostly office space. They did have a garage in the basement, but it wasn't nearly large enough. But we were, you know, we were looking at that, looking at possible. There's another piece of property that was attached to that. That's a small wooded property. It's fully wooded. I mean, there were some other options we kind of looked at along with that, but once we started kind of getting into that more, we're just adding more and more money to it and not being able to actually purchase the property, because we asked if it was actually for sale and they didn't want to sell it. It was actually just recently purchased. So that, and just full disclosure, that's already been leased in the last few months, but...
Yeah, I guess one other, I guess two other comments. One, just around the residential area. The existing facility is in a residential area. I mean, I know they've got railroad tracks on one side, but they are fully surrounded by residences on the other side. So I don't necessarily, I know that that is a good argument for not necessarily doing it there, but when I look at, you know, potentially, you know, the two-acre industrial lot at somewhere between half a million and 700,000 dollars, and if you go back, I think a couple slides, I think it was what, 450 plus, you know, three percentage? Okay, so $500,000. I mean, in my mind, if we were, you know, buying land, even at the $700,000, the lack of risk of, you know, the railroad ever, you know, doing anything, or, you know, they, or even, you know, pushing the rent up, you know, significantly more than where it's at, to me, that seems like that would be in the best interest of the city long term. I mean, I know whatever decision we make here, we're not going to have to deal with the impact of it because nobody in this room will likely be, you know, sitting in this room in 25 years. And I know I've pushed, you know, multiple times. I'm not a fan of, you know, spending millions of dollars on land that we do not own. If we were, if they were committing to a, you know, a 20-year lease with 10-year, you know, extensions, then hey, that'd be awesome. But that's not the case. So I think, you know, for me, you know, spending a little bit of extra money over that time period is certainly worth it and in the best interest of the city.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes?
Matt, did you tell me that the land really isn't of any value to the railroad other than for this purpose, correct?
Correct. I mean, from my, you know, from talking to them on-site, you know, that was, that was a kind of, I guess, a big relief for me. Obviously, there's, like Gary said, we're talking about 15-year lease, that's what we have now. But with that property having a right of way through it, I mean, it truly is very little property for the railroad. And, you know, their whole goal is to keep this property leased. That's how Norfolk Southern makes their money. And they like having cities as leases because they know they pay their bills. So they were very eager to keep our lease going, which is why they, I think they gave the 15-year lease. You know, initially, they said absolutely no way in my first meeting with Reed, but the more and more we talked and met on scene there, you know, that's why they came back with the 15-year. Here?
Just to clarify, it's a five-year lease with at least two lease extensions of five years.
Correct.
And at the end of that five years, they could potentially say, "We're not going to renew," correct?
No. The lease is, the lease is written where we can cancel, but they can't. So it's going to roll over into a five-year lease. Unless Jack can explain differently. I mean, that's what they, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess, moving forward, I mean, we were kind of under the impression with the budget amendment to start construction drawings, that council was good with this. And then, you know, with that meeting that I missed, I just wanted to make sure, if we could do a straw poll to let staff know to continue the path that we're on now, just so we know, because this next year's budget, we are going to be asking for construction money to build this. So we don't want to spend any money that council isn't going to support here in a few months for the next budget. So I would like, you know, unless somebody would like something more formal, just a straw poll, so I know staff and I can go ahead and start spending the money in this budget to advance this. So if we could do a straw poll, I would appreciate that.
Well, I think, I mean, I guess your question around the straw poll is whether or not we're going to, at some point, continue with construction of actual facility at that location.
Correct.
Not necessarily this budget year, because we may decide when we go through the budget that we don't want to spend any money on buildings. Not say that we don't need to, I'm just saying, I don't want to say that we're committing to that now.
Correct. What I want to do is make sure any money we spend this year isn't a complete waste because the council wants us to go somewhere else. Because if that's the case, then we just need to readjust. The last thing Peter and I want to do is waste any additional money on this project. So yes, thank you. money on this project. So yes, thank you for clarifying that, Gary. It's just, we want to know that the money we're spending moving forward is for a good, good cause. So...
Okay, so the straw poll that we're asking for, if you are in support of continuing the public works facility being built on the railroad property, please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. Matt, do you have anything else on that? Discussion topic number two is changes to rules and procedures of meetings. Mr. Gatlin?
Yes, this is the, I think, second committee slash caucus meeting that we have discussed this. I incorporated some of the changes that were emailed to me or people that had called me after the first meeting last month. And I think the only other feedback I have received is from Mr. Hermes, who had a pretty minor suggestion. I don't know if you want to discuss that, or...
I'd be happy to. I think it's, section six talks about the order of the meetings. And I would recommend that under item L, where we're talking about, what is the wording on that? Report on capital projects, that we also add a report from department heads as well.
And I did not receive any other feedback. So unless someone has any questions or comments tonight, I would propose that we have this at our next regularly scheduled meeting for passage.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do have a couple items, I think, that I do have concern about. I think particularly in DI, where we're requiring the legislation to be sent to the city attorney mayor and city administrator prior to any discussion.
That would be under section 10 DI?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, 10 DI.
Right. And I know you and I have discussed this. You and I maybe disagree. I don't have a vote. So I think it's just, if you want to maybe flesh out your concern to council so that we could, again, maybe do a straw poll to see where people are at on that issue?
Yeah, I mean, I guess when I, when I look at it, the, we are, the, the 12 people here are entrusted with that, the legislative authority. And requiring us to engage the city attorney mayor and city, or city administrator prior to having any discussion seems to be in conflict with that, at least in, in my opinion. That, that would seem to, you know, say that, you know, I, I can't, you know, call a special meeting with the budget committee and then have a discussion about, you know, a, a budget in, in the absence of those, those individuals, or any other matter for that.
Let me, let me answer that. I mean, there's no way in here is the intent in, in this to keep anybody of the legislative body from discussing legislation, proposing legislation. I, I think the goal here would be that before we get to a first reading, which is why it's proposed legislation, and maybe the term proposed could be changed, that it, it's really important that that legislation be vetted. Vetted is even the wrong choice of word, but to be discussed with the executive branch. Take a budget amendment as an example. I think it would be inappropriate. It would not be illegal. I think, I, I think a legislative body could absolutely do a budget amendment without ever any, any or interaction of the executive branch. But I don't think that would be good government. Like, I think it would be important to involve, at a minimum, you know, people that would be impacted by that budget amendment. But I don't think anyone's trying to keep anything from the legislative body here. I think it's just a, again, as I stated probably six weeks ago when we started this exercise, I just want to try to keep the trains running on time. And I want to make sure that when we have a first reading, that there's, there aren't weird issues that pop up.
Yeah, and I guess the, the piece that I'm trying to avoid is this body just becoming a, a rubber stamp, so to speak. And actually being able to, you know, take ownership of certain pieces, like the ethics ordinance, or I know Mr. Hermes did something around the nuisance ordinance, or, or just any of those pieces that, you know, we have the ability to do that. And if we, you know, wanted to change, you know, whatever. And, and I, and I do realize that it's best practice, you know, to involve those that are going to be required to execute it. But just having the language in here saying that, we must, we shall send it to them prior to the discussion.
But it clearly states in here, Gary, that should not hinder or stop the legislator from sponsoring the legislation. This is really just a common courtesy addition to this. I mean, if you're going to pass a piece of legislation, the executive branch of government is going to have to implement and execute that piece of legislation. So it's just, from my perspective, it's just common courtesy to, to loop us in to the conversation, to see how it is going to impact our operation. I mean, I, I, we're not trying to stop any legislation. It's just, how do we make the, the wheels turn better? And that's why that last sentence is put in there.
Yeah, and so I guess, then if it real, has no real impact, like if it was, if it wasn't a special meeting tonight, I could have brought legislation for the council to discuss. And, and I, without having sent that, then I guess there is, there's technically no penalty for that, so.
I think this whole document is, to use the mayor's term, best practices. I think we've discussed in the past, there's really no penalty if we don't follow this document. But I think we're trying, in most cases, it's, it's just better practice to involve folks. But, but, so, so let's take your example. If, if you did want to just put as a first reading, an ordinance that you created, and theoretically, nobody knew about until that day of the first reading, right? Because it would be inappropriate to circulate that first reading amongst other council members prior to the meeting. So theoretically, if you're just going to put an ordinance on for first reading, you know, adding to an agenda one night, you can do that. I mean, obviously, if you have a majority of council members that, that support that, you certainly can do that. But, you know, I, I was tasked with giving my recommendations, and I don't think that would be good governance to do it that way. Are, are there, are there emergency situations? Are there things that come up? Absolutely there are. But I just don't want to get into the habit where every night, you know, we, sitting at this table up here, and Ms. Hoffman is as much impacted by this as anybody, where we are, you know, having legislators just pop up ordinances that none of us have looked at before that night. It, it's not really fair to us, to be brutally honest, because it might be something that, you know, we have information on, or we need a little more due diligence on.
It's not necessarily fair to other legislators either. You know, not necessarily everybody's in the loop. When, if you or I are writing something, so I mean, I think it's good to share it with Jack, the executive branch and staff, prior to presenting it at a public meeting.
And, and I guess I suppose that this solves the, the issue. It's not just the legislators, but it's the executive body as well. And that has been my, I guess, over the past two years, anytime that I've moved to pull something off the agenda, it's because council was seeing it for the first time at a first reading. That was the only reason that I've ever pushed or asked to have something taken off.
And I think your concerns have been put into this document as well, that no piece of legislation, other than some type of emergency situation, will go onto an agenda for a first reading without it being brought to a caucus meeting.
Yeah, I, I guess my only other concern is though, that, so yes, we get something brought to a caucus meeting by the executive body, and then regardless, and then it's discussed, and then it just ends up on the agenda anyway.
Fine, but y'all can vote it down.
Yeah, but we don't get to vote until, we, we never take a vote on the first reading. And rarely do the, some of those things come off of that first reading, say, we'll wait to vote and vote it down in the second reading. I, I just want to make sure that the, the 12 members here maintain their, I guess, their legislative authority, and we're not just become, not being pushed into being the rubber stamp.
Well, I, I can tell you, as the drafter of this document, that certainly was not my intent, as it relates to DI. It was merely just to keep us in the loop. And I don't think for a minute, I mean, I mean, beyond that, we, we wouldn't have the authority with this document to do that anyway. I mean, the statutes are pretty clear, and what the legislative body is able to do. So do you have any suggestions how we could have the same practical effect of DI with any word changes or any things that we could do that would, that would satisfy you? Or D2, I'm sorry? No, DI. Yeah, DI.
No, I, I don't know the best way to, to word that.
What about changing shall to should? So it's implied as best practice, but it's not required per the document?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Does that satisfy you, Gary?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Anybody else have any questions, thoughts, or concerns as it relates to this document? Yes?
Six N. Why is that being removed? I know we don't have much correspondence. I don't think I've attended a meeting where there was any correspondence, but it does concern me that we're just taking that out. Especially if we are having to continue with virtual meetings for any reason, which we know we, there could be a reason why we'd need to. I feel like that might be the one opportunity that we have to hear from the public, and we'd be taking that out.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't honestly recall whose idea was to take out correspondence, but I know I supported it, and I may have been the one who decided to take that out. Every city handles correspondence differently. I think that it historically has been letters and cards thanking people for their services, right? Thanks, Public Works for cleaning our streets. Thanks for wishing me birth, whatever, right? I think that's kind of historically what happened. But I think it, it can be dangerous if we allow individuals to voice their concerns through email, and that we read those at meetings. Because there's no opportunity to rebut them. And I think it's a slippery slope where, you know, we don't want to be reading 50 emails every night on both sides of the issue. I think that with live meetings, I think that there is, you know, you have crazy people go to the microphone, right? But it limits, like, like it takes a certain level of gumption in the whole scheme of things. Like, I think going to a live microphone and challenging a council person, or mayor, or whoever, that, that takes a level of courage. And I'm not saying it's a deterrent. I think it's a truer representation. I think virtual meetings on Zoom, I mean, we all see it. People do sillier things on Zoom than they do in live meetings, right? Or turn themselves into a cat filter and then not know how to take it off. But I think with email and with correspondence, what my, what my concern is, is we may have opened the door a couple meetings ago, that people think they can voice their concerns via email, and I just don't want Ms. Hoffman reading 20 emails every night.
I understand. I, I kind of just wanted to hear the logic behind it, because, like I said, I've never heard any correspondence read. But I understand it's kind of more like appropriate for letters and things like that. And I'm not, I'm not necessarily in support of reading 50 emails during that time period. What my concern is, is that if we were back to all virtual for some reason, what would be the method for receiving that input from the public? And maybe that's addressed someplace. I just, I just, that was my concern when I saw that taken out. But I, I, I hear where you're coming from.
I think that type of stuff can come up in new business. It certainly would have an opportunity to be brought up. Or in announcements. Those are both still part of the meeting, and in writing. And I think we just hit a certain level of repetitiveness. And I certainly support taking it out.
But to answer your question, I think under 11D are procedures for virtual meetings, because we do address that here. And hopefully, we never have another virtual meeting, right? The numbers are going down, and more people are getting vaccinated. But under 11D, I added, the public shall be afforded an opportunity to participate in the virtual meeting and to comment on any of the essential items.
I saw that. I have another question about that.
Okay.
My question under that was how. And maybe that, and maybe that part hasn't been worked out yet, and that's okay. I'm not saying it has to be. I just want to make sure that there's, there's a way, or that it's in there.
I, I think that we all agree that we need to allow there to be interaction with citizens at these virtual meetings. I don't know if, if some combination between the three of us and IT have agreed to the technological ways to handle that. Every city does it differently. You know, like Planning Commission is an example, kind of has questions that you email, or, or kind of like an instant chat feature. That's okay. I have a city that literally sends out the Zoom link to everybody, and we have 50 people sitting on Zoom. That's a little crazy, right? I have another city that basically puts people in like a dark room until it's comment time, and then they take them out of that dark room and then sort them in the meeting. I mean, I think there's different ways that we can skin that cat. I think Mr. Hermes suggested that we put a microphone in a safe room and, and have people show up at a meeting, you know, or in a room at the city building, show up for your comment, and it'll be safe, and we'll videotape it and make it a part of Zoom. I mean, I think there's ways to do it. I just don't think we've...
I'm all for it, as long as we've got, as long as that's in here, I'm good with it. I just didn't want to take out correspondence completely, unless we had something else in here that I felt like was a way for them to communicate with us. So I'm, I'm good with it. But I do appreciate you explaining the background of it.
And in reality, the, the correspondence piece is not where we typically put any kind of public feedback that we've received. It's more kind of intertwined into the discussion when we're talking about a particular topic. So even when we did have virtual meetings, correspondence wasn't a, a part of that agenda. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, I guess around the same section, the piece that I see missing, or I'm not sure how that's handled, is if the majority of council wants to call a virtual meeting. This seems to, you know, eliminate our ability to do that without us, you know, having a special meeting to take, strike out this portion of the municipal order, so that we could call a special meeting and do it virtually.
So isn't that fixed by just adding 11A if the mayor or council?
Yes.
Do you agree?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That would be both on 11A and 11C?
Yep. Well...
Because we would set the agenda.
By statute, the mayor sets the agenda unless there's in writing from the majority of council. I mean, we can put all that in C. I, I can clean that up.
Okay.
The mayor shall set the agenda unless special meeting called by council. How's that sound?
That sounds great.
All right. All right. Thank you all for the feedback and comments. I'll make these changes, and we'll have it ready for a vote at the next meeting.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the revision to the snow emergency ordinance. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something the staff and I have talked over the last two years, and every time... and every time the snow season's over, we forget about it until the next snow event. So I thought tonight was the perfect time, since we have been inundated with snow this last week, to discuss this. Just so all council is aware, this is the ordinance that dictates our snow emergency. The mayor can, can authorize a snow emergency at any time, and, and over the list, there's a set list of streets, which I didn't list on here. But there's a set list of streets. Not every street in Erlanger are considered snow routes. Additionally, any, any accumulation of snow over two inches in depth is an automatic snow emergency. So the only thing in this ordinance that states is about parking. And the original purpose of this is to assist Public Works in clearing the streets. After discussing with Public Works and, and police, and even fire for the last two years, you know, we've, we've really determined that there, there is no operational benefit for snow emergencies. I know some of you may think that sounds kind of odd, and it probably is compared to other cities in the county. But honestly, it's, it's rare that all vehicles are moved from the streets, the ones that are set. It's even kind of complicated for PD and even Public Works to know which, which streets are the ones that aren't supposed to have them. You know, plow operators aren't really hindered by vehicles because they're used to them being around. You know, the, the big thing that I always bring up in any ordinance we pass is the enforcement. You know, the enforcement fines and vehicle impounds are a result of these issues. So while the police officers are working on accidents, they're getting calls from neighbors saying, you know, "My next door neighbor didn't move their car, but I did. I need a cop out here." And then when they don't get there within an hour, we get a second call to dispatch saying, "Why aren't the cops here?" You know, "We pay their, their salary. They need to be here." Well, they're out dealing with, you know, more important things at the time, and that's hard to get through to people when that's an emergency on their part, is the, the street not being as plowed as nice as they want. Then after the snow emergency, we get inundated with, myself gets inundated with the parking complaints, because I'm the one that has those hearings if they want to fight one. So then I have to go over the ones that are want to object to the parking citation or impound that resulted in that. You know, a lot of them, it's elderly people that couldn't get out to move them. It was overnight, and they sure as heck can't get them now because they're plowed in by snow. People working second and third shifts are sleeping during that time, so they didn't get a chance to move it, but they got a ticket anyway. And then, you know, we get the same complaint as, "There's nowhere to park my car. Where do you want me to park it?" I mean, I get that call. "Where do you want me to put it? I can't put it in my driveway. It's not big enough." We'll have the parks fill up with, with cars parked there, which keeps Public Works from plowing those. The, the people that do live around parks, they'll use those parking lots to get them off the street. So, you know, just kind of that short synopsis is, it causes a lot of issues that really, there's not a whole lot of benefit for. You know, police have, can be better utilized and respond in the other situations than parking complaints during that. And that, that's, that's kind of where we're leading to now, is the staff's recommendation is just to go ahead and eliminate that ordinance. Truly, the only thing right now is it's a revenue driver, because it's not helping operations. It's actually causing staff more work. So the truly only benefit, I guess, is that the city's getting $25 to $50 for citations. And then, you know, we have a lot of unhappy citizens. So the staff recommendation would be to rescind ordinance 72.02 that lists out all the snow emergencies. Additionally, there's two other ordinances that have the, the term "snow emergencies" in them that would also ask that it be striked out as well. I'm open to any comments. If anybody objects to this, by all means, we can discuss that. Yes, ma'am?
I did have a concern, and Peter, your crew did a great job and stuff for the roads. But my only concern was, I thought in the past Riggs Avenue was a snow emergency. The side streets coming off of Riggs this morning were great. Riggs Avenue was the worst I've ever seen it, and I live in that area, and I grew up in that area. There was some cars parked on Riggs, and I did take pictures of them. And I'm sure that was part of the reason part of it did not get scraped, but that's a major thoroughfare. I mean, I got to the point where I came out, turned around by rosary, and went back up Riggs because I was afraid to go any further. It was that bad, and I have grown up in that area. It was probably the worst I've seen Riggs. No offense, but it was probably because cars were parked there.
And that was today?
Yes, it was, and I did take pictures this morning and stuff, because it was frightening, and I've driven that sprout my whole life, and it was probably the worst I've seen Riggs. And I thought Riggs is a major thoroughfare that used to be a snow emergency. And I did notice a lot of the circles. It seems like back in our area, the cars were removed from the circle. And I have worried about cars parking in the circle, because even fire trucks can't get down when they're in the circles and stuff. But the side streets look good, but I, I don't know what, I don't want policemen, when they could be assisting people that are injured or in a wreck, to come and have to give a citation, but I don't know what the remedy is, but I still think there should be snow emergency streets.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I can't speak to Riggs. You know, we did have a lot of ice last night, which I know impacted some of that. Additionally, one thing I did leave out that I talked to the mayor about, you know, if we do remove this, is that we'll be proactive in the announcements, like we posted yesterday on Facebook, to, you know, let people recommend them to get off the street if they can, things like that. So to be a little more proactive in that aspect, not so much in the ordinance. Yes, Rebecca?
I think I'm going to second the Riggs, because that's where I almost got T-boned last week because of how slippery it was. But with regard to the communication piece, I, you know, I'm fine with it being removed, but a lot of residents aren't going to necessarily understand the difference between what a snow emergency is, how it affects them, is, does that mean it's safe to drive? Because a lot of these terms, winter advisories, Level 1, all of them are pretty synonymous to the public. We may understand them on the backend, but I think that the communication piece is going to be like more critical than, than for, like formally removing it from an ordinance. I think that that's going to be the more important thing, because we could remove it, we could not remove it, and the public is not going to really understand the difference between when, when it's safe to drive. Because when I hear "snow emergency," and again, when I lived on Jaclyn, I always thought, "Oh, my gosh, if I don't move my car, it's going to get towed." Never knew that wasn't a thing. But that's, that's why. I mean, it's, it's just, it's on the signs, and a lot of people just assume, and you're talking...
Our ordinance doesn't talk about travel. I mean, our ordinance, the only thing it talks about, it's not like the county's ordinance, it only talks about parking.
Sure, but I'm saying they don't know that. We know that he, here in the room, but communicating to the public, yes, please remove your, it, it could help. I thought that was awesome that we put that out yesterday or the day before. My days are running together.
Right.
Just, sorry. Just my two cents on the communication piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Gary, I think you had your end up first.
Yeah, and you brought up the communication piece. Have we been under a snow emergency for the past several days? We did not declare one?
We didn't declare one, but it was automatic. However, we asked the police not to enforce it, not to enforce the parking element of it.
And I guess I was, what I was looking for is, where do we communicate that as well?
We didn't. And that's why I'm bringing it up, and that's why I put it on last week, because I realized that, you know, that we had so much, and we, you know, I've gotten questions from, from council and citizens about it, and I've explained that. So which is why I'm bringing it up now, just so I can, you know, either put something on March's council meeting to go ahead and move forward with an ordinance change, or if it's council's will, then we're going to start, you know, proactively enforcing it. But again, it's just, I explained the issues with that.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, Jennifer?
Jennifer?
I have a few things. I think several people have said, "It's confusing to residents." I think one of the things that's really confusing to residents is Kenton County had a snow emergency, but we didn't. And some people think if Kenton County declares it, it automatically applies. I realize it doesn't, but it's confusing. And so I think that's one of the things Rebecca mentioned. You know, people sometimes assume that it means I can't drive. In Hamilton County, when there's a snow emergency, it means don't drive. So people who work in Cincinnati but live over here kind of use all those terms interchangeably, and it, it just gets very confusing. I, I will say, it helps when the cars get moved. I just, I, I realize that the snow plows are used to driving around them. However, for those of us who drive on those streets, it's really helpful when there's not any cars and the whole street can be plowed. Whether that's for a business, where I work is in Erlanger, we had the worst time today trying to park our cars, because our plow hadn't gotten there yet to plow our drive, or our parking lot. We couldn't park on the street because other people were parked on the street. We also, it was just a mess. And it does help if the cars are moved. But the last thing I'll say is, or two things, asking people to move their cars was very helpful. My street, hardly anyone moved their cars off the street until they saw what was posted on Facebook yesterday, which was get your cars off the street if possible. So if that's all we do, I think that's more helpful than declaring a snow emergency, honestly. Because a snow emergency is confusing. Just telling people to move their cars is much more effective. The only other thing I had a question about was, do we get complaints about, from people who left their cars on the street, and then all the snow gets plowed towards their car? And because I saw that on Shore Hill Avenue, or Shore Hill Lane where I work, there's tons of cars that are literally buried between last week's snow and this week's snow. And I just wanted to know from a Public Works perspective, are we getting complaints about that? We are, I mean, I realize we get complaints about people being told to move their cars, but then on the flip side, are we also getting complaints from the same people who didn't move their cars, and now they're ticked, that their car's buried?
I, I hate to say this out loud, but I don't think I've ever gotten that complaint. Now, I know everyone's reading this and listening to this. They're going to start calling tomorrow morning. But my answer to them would be, you know, we recommended that you get them off the street. Our, I mean, our plow guys have to plow the roads, and that's just part of, part of the deal, unfortunately. Those are definitely much easier for me to answer than, than why did it cost $500 to have my car impounded? Because I was sleeping or at work for the last two days or out of town. Because the, the tow companies do charge more when it's plowed in, because they have to unplow it. So that's an additional charge to, and you laugh. It's true. I've, I've dealt with them. Those bills add up, especially if somebody just happens to be out of town that weekend. You know, that's the reality of, of the staff's world when, when these things kind of go on. Yes, ma'am?
And a lot, I think Facebook is great, and we all do social media, but there is a lot of people that may not, and they watch the news. And when it scrolls at the bottom usually throughout the snowstorms and so forth, "Snow emergency in Erlanger was not listed." So I don't know that we need to just assume we other have to maybe make it public or make it other avenues besides Facebook for people to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not to think about that.
And Diana, I think some of us have actually quit Facebook altogether, so... So there's something there. I won't see it.
Yes, ma'am?
Do you think that common sense ever plays in on this?
Any other questions before we move on? Yes, Rebecca?
With regard to common sense, I mean, a lot of times people view it as synonymous with a Level 1, or like they're, they view it as part of that tearing process. It's just, so... Level 2 is when you don't drive, in my mind, when it's probably not ideal to drive in a Level 1. But again, I think it's just more about, I think the communication piece. And we have people who receive emails, right? So, I mean, did we put an email blast out to those people?
Yes.
Good. Awesome. I mean, I get...
Email blast, there was a Facebook post, and I think that probably was one of the first times we've done that. But we discussed, you know, the mayor and I discussed that, like, let's get the message out, just what they should be doing right now, even though we're not officially declaring one. You know, these are the things that, whether it's common courtesy, or just, this is what you should be doing. That's the thing. You know, we looked at the Kenton County's levels, and again, they, they don't just have parking, but they also have travel. But the other issue, again, is enforcement, like I always bring up. The, the police officers are never going to cite somebody with a misdemeanor for driving during a snowstorm, because everybody's essential i, is their own. I mean, if it may be going to get a loaf of bread at the store is essential to them. I mean, what, our cops aren't going to be citing them for misdemeanors for that. And that's, that's the, that's what the county's snow emergency does. At least makes it a scary thing to think about, but I guarantee now county police are citing for that. Any other questions on that? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and have Jack put together an ordinance for March, and, and we'll, we can discuss further there after everybody's kind of thought about it for a couple of weeks, if that's okay with everybody here. Thank you. And the final thing, Mayor, if you don't mind me just continuing on here. Unless Emmy wants to come up and talk, I can, I'll go ahead and... In the fight against the semis for Emmy and me for the last month or so, this is Erlanger Commerce Center. We're still having semis take out power in Sycamore Tree and other, other streets there. So last week, Emmy and I were talking again. We're talking to PDS, or like weekly meetings with them, on how and trying to figure out the GPS situation, which I think Emmy has successfully fixed all but Apple. And if they're listening, please call Emmy back, because she's been on the phone with them for many hours, I think, last week, trying to get their GPS fixed. So we have one more solution that we would ask council to consider. Again, we haven't really 100% made this decision, but we definitely have it on the table, and PDS thinks it's a good idea at this point, that we'd like to put on for the March meeting if we decide to move forward. The issue when we get to the bottom, this intersection, is hopefully everybody is well aware now, semis, instead of going straight into this huge industrial complex, think they should go down this really tiny Erlanger Road, because their GPS tells them to go right here. Okay, which obviously there's no entrance there. So another fix that Emmy and I have thought about is to rename this road, starting here. That is Erlanger Road goes all the way back to the old Erlanger Road that would go straight, which is blocked off now, on the Sycamore Tree Lane. What we would like to do is rename this section from Sycamore Tree Lane to Houston Sycamore Tree Lane. So it becomes an L road, so it's no longer Erlanger Road. So if nothing else, hopefully, once that gets in all the systems, there will not be any addresses back there that have Erlanger Road addresses. There's no, there's no houses on it. All of this is vacant properties back there. So we're considering that as an option to just go ahead at the end, at this intersection, instead of it saying Erlanger Road down here, which gives the, the drivers that are actually reading signs some hope, I guess, that their address is back there. If that sign says Sycamore Tree Lane, we're hoping that that's one more avenue that they might not take. So that's our idea right now. If you see it on the agenda in March, that's our plan, unless anybody has any complaints with that today. Gary?
I guess, first item is, what makes us confident that'll fix it?
There is nothing. We've gone through, this is like Plan Z.
So then why not switch it to a one-way road?
We've discussed that, but again, that, that limits emergency responses and the citizens back there. That, that is in our toolbox. We just haven't gone there yet.
It's Plan Double Z, Gary.
Yeah.
Yeah, the people on Sycamore do say they use it.
Do what?
The people on Sycamore say they use it.
No, I, I understand that, but...
It is an option, and that's something we have talked about and considered, but it's just, we're not there yet.
I, I mean, I, we thought the $10,000 was going to fix it, and that didn't fix it. And we thought, you know, some additional signage would fix it, and that hasn't fixed it. Well, let's just, let's just get there, and, I mean, I think when we, the data that I saw, there were limited number of calls over a six-month period on, on Sycamore. I mean, everything else, you know, could have gone up, you know, through, through the neighborhood as well. It, it just seems, why, you know, why, why play around with one more item and then, you know, change the name of the streets and whatever that's going to cost us? And let's just get it done. That's my thoughts. So no, I, I don't support...
Are you wanting to propose the one-way street for March, then?
I would absolutely support that, propose that.
Jennifer?
What does PDS say about the one-way street? You said PDS is in support of this.
That, that's up to us. They have no...
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if they had an opinion.
The reason I have PDS is because they help with addressing, and they help with the GPSs. So that's, yeah, they, they're not going to tell us yea or nay for a one-way street. That's completely up to us. Yes, ma'am?
If it's, you said it's all vacant land. Do we, who owns the land?
We own some of it, and there's a couple of other, I think there's one or two pieces of property that's, is it Utah? It, it's out of state that owns it. We've actually reached out to them over the last six months, and I don't think we've heard a response. It's very, I mean, slivers of useless land, so there's nothing...
It's heirs that own it that frankly might not even realize they own it?
There's no structures?
No structures.
Okay.
Yes, this would affect most... Yes, this would affect most, really us more than anybody. We own most of the property on Erlanger Road.
It's not going to affect any emergency vehicles getting to anything-
Not with a name change.
Like a fire or anything like that, on that road?
No. And that's why we kept it the same name, so there's no-
Right, I understand.
There's not additional street name to know or anything, it's just a continuation of that, and it would not limit emergency services. Please?
As the road continues north, I know that it's blocked off because it was failing and slipping into the creek there, but as it begins to pick back up over by Dynamic Catholic and, what's the other one over there, Sterlingco Glass?
Between Turfway?
Is that Erlanger Road still then?
Yes, but that's also been closed off. So we, by ordinance, have closed off-
So that would stay?
Yeah, we've closed off Erlanger Road from Turfway to Sycamore Tree.
Okay.
That's already been done.
I love the idea of changing the name. I think that would be effective. I don't know how long it'll take for it to, for the GPS to catch up with it, but the only thing I would mention is that we don't get the opportunity to name a street very often in Erlanger, and I think that we should entertain the idea of calling it something maybe like Sudcamp Lane or Sudcamp Road.
I think, like, the staff's talked about this, and I think the easiest way is just the continuation of that road, it would be less confusing for everybody, that's just our opinion. Tom, did you?
So, Gary, I agree, in the very beginning, one-way road, I think, would be wonderful, but the problem is, is they have so many signs down there right now, I don't know if they wouldn't ignore those signs, the one-way road sign. I mean, how many, how many signs do we have down there, Peter?
I think-
Forty. Four zero.
I think what it might come down to is both. If you have it as a, you know, if it's still not working with it being Sycamore Tree, then you make it a one-way, and that's not even a guarantee. They're not listening to any signs.
Well, most people feel like they're only going one way, you know?
And I think honestly, too, with the emergency vehicles, having been a paramedic in Covington, there's many times I've gone the wrong way to get where I needed to go.
Well, and that's, we discussed that, but if you look, if you look at that first curve, that is a really dangerous curve, and it may not look as steep here, but because of the elevation and grade, it would be very dangerous to go the wrong direction. You know, going off of Holbert, the one-way's, that's a no-brainer, you know, police and fire do it all the time. This is one that the PD and fire are going to tell them absolutely not. It's just not as safe because of the grade and the turn. We've discussed that as, in complete depth, that it's not that big of a deal for public emergency services, but it is because of the terrain there.
So we-
It's a blind curve.
So are you saying that emergency services do not use that road?
They do. They, we discussed if we made it a one lane, well, that's okay, because they can go down, they're legally allowed to go down a one-way. The problem is, is because of the terrain, it's a black, or it's a blind curve with a drop, it would be really dangerous for fire trucks and ambulances and police to go down the wrong way with other cars coming up, as opposed to-
Versus two ways with other cars coming up?
Yeah, because they're expecting two ways.
Oh, because they're expecting it.
On the other streets over here-
Yeah, I got it.
They're straight down, you'll see if a car, police car's coming at you with lights and sirens. They just, you can't see it on this road, it's just not safe.
Well, you've also got to take into consideration, just right out here at Commonwealth and Baker. Trucks take, make their turns onto Baker, they go up to Erlanger Road, they make a left, just stay out of their way. They don't read, they don't pay attention. The only thing that stops them is when they get to the dead end on Erlanger Road, and they got that fence that keeps them from driving off onto the expressway. You know, I mean, common sense has got to play in somewhere sometime.
No. Any other, yes, ma'am?
I don't agree with making it a one-way. I don't want to interfere with services, getting, emergency services getting down there. I agree with continuing with the Sycamore, it makes sense, it might be easy, but renaming it, I wouldn't take that off the, I mean, take that away, I mean, it sounds like a, we should entertain it.
Yes, ma'am?
I know you said it's used by the residents, but have we done like a traffic study to know, like, how many cars actually go down in a day, to see what the impact would be if we did turn it into a one-way street?
I can, I don't think we've collected data, we have talked, we've talked to citizens from the neighborhood, but we haven't, but that's something we can do.
And what do the signs currently say, the four or 10 signs that are out there?
No outlet, no trucks, don't go down here, weight limit, stay away, I mean, we've got just about every- boulders, they get drug a quarter mile. And we do have some center dividers coming here shortly, that should, well, if it would stop snowing, yes. That should help also. Yeah, I think that'll definitely help. Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick question. When a truck damages the power lines, or whatever they're damaging, are we charging them for that? Okay.
Yeah, the last, the last two that have been there, they have been charged.
Okay. And if they take out these center dividers, we're going to have to charge them for that, too?
If-
If we can catch them?
Yeah, if we.
Okay.
They are the flip-down ones, so hopefully, I think the plow truck will kill it more than a semi, but we'll see.
Is there, sorry, one more question. What is the cost to the city to do a renaming of that area?
Twenty dollars a sign, or how much is a new sign, new street sign?
Is that the only cost? Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, we'll have to, a couple stamps to send in the proper stuff, I think, but I mean, minimal, minimal cost. Yes, sir?
Speaking of costs, I did just get a cost on doing a traffic study, and the minimal cost I could find was $10,000, so we may want to think about how official we make that traffic study.
No, the only thing I was going to do is put the PD radar signs up, so we can determine, you know, the times and the amount of vehicles, so that's a great idea, we'll get that data, too. Okay. Moving forward, we will, if, after Emmy and I discuss this further, that might be something we'll put on to March, and then if somebody wants to discuss a different name than what we've decided, that's something that you guys can kind of put forth there. But I believe that's it, and so, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Kramer, just a question. So once we have that, we'll have that draft legislation then for the March caucus meeting? So we can review the actual legislation before-
Yes.
First reading?
Yes. And that'll be on both snow, snow emergency and the street names. I'll get that to you as soon as we have them and decide to move forward with them. Thank you.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Mrs. Nicely, Mrs. Reckers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, have a good evening.